Yeah, there are two seats, well, those that are happening in the back of the chamber to discuss the meeting thus far. Please note there are some seats in the inside of the chamber that are manned up if you'd like to. Coming into the council chambers.
There.
Are there any late items to be placed on this or in the future agenda?
I'm not from staff, there is none.
Mr. Mayor? I'd ask for clarification from staff or you as our leader. Clarification on I-3. Will this include full disclosure discussion regarding Timberlands Advisory Committee?
I intend to do that.
Thank you.
I have a whole packet of information there prepared to hand out to who we may select tonight. And it's, uh... Notwithstanding that we did have some discrepancies and some instability during our first public hearing, I do want to comment, to make conscious of two things before we proceed. One, I want to compliment those of you who have invited my request to be as quiet as you can be, if that needs to be acknowledged, and certainly, although for those of you who have been out here before, this was better than the meeting before. Secondly, as we continue forward, I am reminded, and remarks of our, well, our British President, a remarkable politician, Abraham Lincoln, who asked us to search for, uh, search for our better angels of our natures. I hope we can do that. I encourage us in our meeting with you to look inside and find your better angels of So, I want to try to as closely follow the agenda as we can, but I'm going to ask the, I'm going to ask if the council member, council member is there, would wish us to go to the consider agenda and get that behind us? Or do you want us to go immediately into the section of I's? I want to give that to your, your correct adjustments, so what would you guys prefer?
I would prefer that we just go directly to I. Most of the folks here...
There's a lot of people who are, we all...
Yeah, I, I, that's why I asked if we'll enter, but I want to distract the agenda from... Okay, then we will go, because that's a consensus. So, we'll go to item I-1. In our last council meeting, in our last council meeting, we had a consensus of the council to see if we could find some other options that might look, in the hopes of, if at all possible, to find some information here in the course of our public commentary perhaps as best we can to find a way to win here. This is a very contentious topic, obviously. So, we did ask of our staff, led by our city manager, how the team should present to us some options, prepared them for our review and has prepared some options that we may consider following our requests. So, I'm going to put, I'm going to type order to the city manager to lead us into this discussion.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff did in fact provide five options that are in the memo as part of tonight's packet. As always, council can add their own options, or they can modify existing options that are provided. There are two notable items about tonight's staff memo that I do want to bring up. One, you'll notice is that all seniors have voluntarily signed up. There was one exception to that, our Public Works Director. He happened to be, I believe, in Mexico on the honeymoon he never had, probably wishing tonight he was still there. But everybody else did voluntarily sign on. It is a little bit unusual, because all staff did want the council to know that they agreed with the direction that staff had provided. The other thing that's a little bit unusual, we asked for options, but staff did provide an option for the council just to consider. And this option really is based from staff's perspective on the unique circumstances that we're in right now. Staff could have sat back and not made a recommendation for council to consider. That would have been the easy thing to do. It would have been very easy just to let the council and both sides that are passionate about the issue go back and forth, and it would be a fairly comfortable place back here, relatively speaking. But we didn't do that. In fact, I can say when I woke up and I eventually got to Sunday's newspaper, I see that, quite frankly, there were people that didn't like, on both sides of the issue, necessarily staff's recommendation. And I guess if we were in negotiations, you know, sometimes in negotiations, council member, when you may have this said, when both sides are not really happy with the outcome, sometimes that is really a good place to be, because it was fair on both sides as much as you can get. But unfortunately, this isn't a negotiations issue. What I mean by that is that you have people that are extremely passionate on both ends of the spectrum for different and various reasons. Probably won't get a win-win. You're going to get somebody that, whatever the decision is, is that not, is not going to agree with that decision. But nonetheless, I think the community, regardless of where they are, do expect a decision, something to come out of tonight's meeting. For staff, this is not about community water fluoridation. It really is about a larger issue and our collective feeling of the importance of not opening the door for potentially going down a draconian change in government. I use that term, because that was a term used in the newspaper, and I do agree with that. It would be a regressive form of government. We agree with that characterization. Regardless of tonight's outcome, staff wants a council and a community to understand that our collective goal as staff is to move past the turmoil surrounding water fluoridation so that we as a community can move forward on the many other important issues that are facing our city today. Water fluoridation is important, regardless of where you're at, but it's one small part of many, many issues that are facing our city to have the quality of life that we all expect and deserve. And we're trying to implement the policies, some not without risks that the council sets, so that we can improve that quality of life and move our community forward. So whatever happens, we do need to get through this issue and move on. And with that, staff can answer any questions that you have, but the memo and the options before you are for council discussion.
So, with that said, and with that said, then I would ask, members of council, if you have any comments, any thoughts, any comments?
Well, Sissy and I were in attendance only by phone at the last meeting, and at that meeting, Sissy and I were given the opportunity to get together before this meeting and discuss how we might look at what the options were. And we did that. And I think it's important that we've heard a lot of questions about alternative to fluoridation, fluoridating the water. And yet, some of the things that are proposed, including the staff's recommendation, weren't necessarily received as being realistic. And I think one of the things that councilman Rook and I agreed to was that if we had a committee of people on both sides of the issue, sit down and sort of vet some of those options and determine what was realistic or not, that we could bring this question of changing the divisiveness that this issue has in the community. Obviously, continuing with fluoridation is going to be divisive for a lot of people in this room. Changing it to non-fluoridation is going to be divisive as well to a lot of people in this room. And so, it's incumbent on us, I think, and I'll let councilmember Rook speak to this issue as well, to take a look at what the, whether there are safe, effective alternatives to fluoridation of the water. And both of us are prepared to do that. I think that picking two or three people from each side of the issue or people that might be able to contribute to the issue of option would be the next necessary step, rather than just making a decision that doesn't, that really chooses one way or the other. So, Sissy, do you have anything you want to say about that?
I do. And I actually really want to thank staff for the options that were given to us, because I think option number five does that. It allows us to have a committee to work with an oral healthcare initiative, that, you know, a committee that has both sides that can get together and kind of figure out what is the, there's options to fluoride, how to get fluoride to the folks that need it the most. Being able to get fluoride to those folks that, you know, to those that can't afford it, to the kids in schools, and to the people that want it, while not having fluoride for the people that don't want it. So, I appreciate the option, let's say option five, because it allows for this committee to come together to discuss this stuff, so that we can move forward in the future.
But there's no certainty that we will have an option.
Sure, there is no certainty that we're going to come together.
And so, I think we need to explore that before we get to the options that are presented.
Are there others on the council this evening that want to, on this particular matter, or others to debate?
I'm the only one that's from day one stated that I support the will of the people, and I want to take this chance to say thank you to everyone, actually, that became involved with this. This is our community, and through this discussion, politics are messy, but we're going to, we're going to get through this. But getting back to the will of the people and the majority of people that took the time to respond to this, we had a greater turnout than our general election. I'd like to remind everyone, as well as the cost that was incurred by the council. I originally offered a much cheaper alternative, and that was to put it on the general election ballot. I've actually got some concerns now that that wasn't followed through by council, my request, because I know on a school bond proposal, that the school superintendent is actually barred from participating in some school bond activities. I actually wonder if that would have occurred had we gone on to the general election ballot by having some of our public officials weigh in on the pro-fluoride side. If we had a few rules that were involved, again, I'd like to know a little bit more about them. Another thing that was actually talked about briefly, it never came up as part of our council discussion, I would actually be interested to know how many dentists in our area do take Medicaid as a payment. Is that, is that part of their business plan? Because I believe that everything I've been presented in this entire process since I've taken the seat on council is that it appears to be that it's mainly for kids. It's mainly parental skills that affect these kids. And then, and the ones where we do have some sort of study, where we're really looking at a 1.5 cavity difference from a community that hasn't chose to fluoridate. I back up a little more, I'd like to thank staff for actually letting us see what our community is telling us that to become a second-class city. I think it would be a step backwards, because there's going to be some costs, additional costs, rather, for our own rates as a second-class city. It's going to put a lot of power in one set of hands out there. And I'm sure there are a few people that remember the city of Pacific, Washington, and what that mayor did to that city before their citizens had time to react and remove him from office. And I hate like hell to see that happen to the city of Portland, Illinois. As far as I'm concerned, my, my stance on this is until, is until we can discontinue fluoridation, have another vote that will pass with the majority of four of us, I don't wish to participate in any other discussion. I do like councilmember Kid, I do like number five, but I'll read the first part of number five, alternative or options. The first part of option number five says, "Stop fluoridation of the municipal water supply." That's the first part of option number five. If we can come together as a council tonight to stop this, I will, by all means, sit down and talk with anyone, everybody, form a committee. I had a great idea come from the Utility Advisory Committee, a member there, that how come we're not talking about this in the UIC? That's got several members of the public that participated in it already. Why are we pushing this through the UIC for coming up with some alternatives? We have mechanisms in place to get citizen involvement. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel here, but you know what? If we can come up with a motion tonight that gets the majority of four to stop fluoridation, I'm by all means willing to listen to you.
So, a couple of questions for staff, if I might. For Mr. Ror, my understanding from what we were instructed to in prior months, with regard to the opportunity for us to go out on the ballot and have an actual vote of the people on this, we were told, is my understanding, that that is not constitutional, that the state Supreme Court has instructed us that we cannot do that. Is that the correct understanding that I have?
No, no problem. To the end of constitutional, I mean...
As an advisory ballot, if I remember correctly.
No, you just stated, on the ballot, for a full vote of the people?
Yes, as an advisory ballot.
Okay, I didn't hear you say advisory ballot.
That's what was said when I made my motion for that, when it died.
So, I don't know, that'd be a good question. Is an advisory ballot even legitimate?
Yes. Basically, however you put it to the people, whether it's on a formal vote, on having an election date, or whether you move it like a poll, or like whatever method, it is an advisory vote. The Supreme Court has said is that it is your decision to make, and however you make that is up to you, but it's still the council who makes that decision.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Another question from Mr. Fulton. It was mentioned tonight and during the last meeting from somebody speaking, that the building that houses the fluoridation equipment is deteriorating and will probably need to be replaced in a year or so. Could you speak to that, please? That's troubling.
Yeah, I asked my water superintendent, we have no plans to replace that building in the near term, in the midterm. It's a metal building that, you know, 10 to 20 years, so maybe in 10 years or longer.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to call on councilmember Case's comments. Craig, as a licensed professional engineer, can you speak to the corrosiveness of fluoride concentrate on our piping system?
I'm a civil engineer.
Okay.
So this is more into chemical engineering.
Okay.
The, as far as when it's in our system diluted, not aware of any piping or corrosive issues when it's concentrated, there are some issues, yes.
I, I know that when it's concentrated, as well as like the hyperchloride that's currently, or actually was in use in the 90s at our sewer treatment plant, that you're actually required to pipe that in a chemically resistant piping, scheduling PVC pipe, which is, again, holds up to the corrosive action of hyperchloride. So, my comment about this is because we had that large, was it a 10-inch water main breakdown at the waterfront, the truck route? Yet to see what that cost us. I do understand the pipe was installed in the 40s, but there's a plumber in me, a part of a plumber in me that says it's because we are adding these caustic chemicals to our piping system. I know for a fact that it is leading to early failure of system, of our piping system, our municipal water system. And I would welcome that discussion with anyone.
You know, I can come back with you with more definitive answers, but it's highly unlikely that the small amount of fluoride in our drinking water has any effect on our piping. Our piping is 70 years old, and that's, actually, the marine, the marine drive water front is where our piping is the oldest and the highest pressure, and that's why we had to replace it, because it's...
Again, I would, I would stand by my statement that it did nothing to, it hastened its demise, is my point in this.
Are you concerned about the chlorine that we put in the water, that maybe that has something to do with pipe stewardship?
That actually, good, good point, councilmember Case. It is, it is, it is actually a combination of both things that react with steel or pass on a pipe that does weaken our piping systems.
So for the record, you're concerned that one tenth of one part per million is having an adverse effect on the city piping system. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. At the final point where that is measured absolutely, and if you'd like me to walk you through an injection system, I'd be happy to. There's what they call a contact area of that piping. It has to roll down a pipe a certain amount of distance before it has even distribution throughout that pipe. And unless you knew that, then you probably wouldn't want to ask me about that.
If I can correct something in our distribution... Distribution might be handled, replaced, and marine drive was as best as cement. It was not metal, any time.
So, do you believe that one part per million, one tenth of one part per million, would have an adverse effect on the concrete pipes of our city?
Thank you for the question, I appreciate it. No!
I'm just trying to get an understanding before you come in. Just my friend, I don't really care.
At the point of measurement is where the parts per million is taken. Generally, those are at the end of the runout of the piping system. Closer to an injection system, whether it's chlorine, fluoride, pH up or down, you have a disproportionate mixture that until it runs down a certain length of pipe, it's not properly mixed. So closer to the source of whatever you're adding, you're going to get a more caustic reaction to your piping system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Ms. Kim?
I think councilmember, I remember, we mentioned, you agreed with me on option five, but I didn't speak to that. I think that was councilmember Brooks, he met. I, I'm looking at the options, I'm looking at option number one to say, gee, you know, it seems like deja vu. We've spent so much time and so much effort and so much research and so many hours and hours on this, and we voted on it. And now I'm hearing, I'm hearing loud, angry, threatening voices, and I, I think we need to, to one issue at a time. And, and we have voted on it, and I, I believe that's, that's how the council functions, so I prefer option number one.
A lot of hours in my day to think about this. The issue comes down to me for education. I don't believe that our kids are getting educated enough on tooth care, personal hygiene, health, food. Look at the sugar they intake, soda pop. I see one right after the Gatorade. It's, it's out of control, and it falls on parents to be parents and take care of that. Well, obviously, parents aren't being parents somewhere along the line, because these kids are going through the crack. And I'd like to see our schools step up and further education with these kids. On the other hand, we took a vote. And whether you're playing sports, or voting for president, or voting for fluoride, there's going to be a winner and there's going to be a loser. And as far as I'm concerned, these people spoke, and that was discontinued fluoride. On that survey, nowhere did it say about any other options. I would like to thank staff for coming up with those options and putting the time and effort into that. I have a question for Mr. Fulton. What would be the replacement cost in your estimate of that building?
We haven't done a replacement cost on it since we have no plans to replace it. It's a small little building, it's, well, we have no replacement cost since I haven't asked my staff to do one.
Thank you. So in the end, it's, I want fluoride out of the water, but that's got to be the first step. I agree with councilmember Wim that get the fluoride out of the water and then talk about the rest of option five. And I would like to see the dental community also participate in that on what is feasible and what's, what's going to work best for the, for the community to get the most bang for the buck and get the fluoride out of the water to start with. Thank you.
Well, I'm sure I was here first, and then...
Well, I'm just, whatever we do needs to have a positive impact on the health and welfare of our community, and putting $20,000 is, you know, is less, think that it's less than a dollar a year per person. It's, it won't solve anything, and it won't help our community, and it's not enough to help the children that, until they, they underserved, so that's really not a good option.
And speaking to number five, and again, thanks to staff for working hard on this, number five seems like a feel-good type of a decision, to split the baby. And at this point in time, there's far, far too many unanswered questions for, to make a decision on that. I mean, there's lots of unanswered questions and unintended consequences that could happen. I'm not against a group that might want to get together and further investigate that. But there's no need, if we're going to do that, there's no need to say we're going to get rid of the fluoride, because the fluoride's here until the end of the current contract anyway. There's no rush to make that decision.
10 years, 10 months is the current...
No, it's in March. So, but we don't have to change, we don't have to change that at this point to keep fluoride until the end of the current contract. There's no...
No. No. Yes, yes.
So, that's, that's the issue. So I'm prepared to make a vote. I'm just giving additional options.
Do it. Do it.
So, Washington Dale Service Foundation sent a letter. They're the ones that funded the initial installation and the fluoride issues and stuff for the last 10 years. They said that they could also offer supports for us that would, based on continuation of the fluoride, that would include funding... that would include funding upgrades as necessary for fluoridation equipment. So if there was a gauging or something like that, there are options available. And I'd like the second issue, or the second one they mentioned, assuming a reasonable cost, fund the addition of a non-floridated public water source. That's something nobody's talking about. You know, if we're looking at options, why are we throwing the baby out with the bathwater? You know, let's look at the options. Um, and including resources to help educate, drive the population. You know, in the last couple of ways, I was, you know, you're starting to kind of second guessing yourself so you do a little bit more digging and stuff. So I was getting all kinds of fascinating information. One letter came from, excuse me, Admiral Patrick Carroll, MD, Senior Advisor to the Assistant Secretary of Health. Citizen scrutiny of all public health strategies is always appropriate and welcome. And it's certainly understandable that people want to be sure their drinking water is safe. But both the science and our long history of community water fluoridation is crystal clear. Fluoridation is one of the safest and most effective public health initiatives ever devised. Another comment from the National Governors Association. This is one I hadn't heard anybody speak to before. So this is the National Association of All the Governors of the state. Governors are at the forefront of health transformation in their states and are finding health policies that both improve the health of all citizens and quality of health care while reducing costs. One area of focus is improving oral health. Governors are positioned to utilize strategies to improve oral health, which not only help the vulnerable populations, but the overall health of all the residents and they include community water fluoridation programs. So the National Governors Association is involved in trying to grow the fluoridation of public water. And this one was really interesting, very brief. This is from the American Dental Association. The House of Delegates says, following water fluoridation policy, the AMA urges state health departments to consider the value of required statewide fluoridation, preferably a comprehensive program of all fluoridation of all public water systems where they are fluorid efficient. So we may not want it here, but there is a continued growing and growing movement throughout the whole United States. And you can look at all the little details. You can look at all of micromanaged. So it comes down to two arguments. There's two very clear, there's two very clear arguments on both sides, and it gets down to something that is part of the decision-making process, quite frankly. The anti-group is being led by a lady who's led their group for the last 10 years, Admiral Blink, with a lot of vitality and enthusiasm.
And knowledge.
And knowledge in three lawsuits against the city, which expended over $600,000 of expense, all of which to provide the local issues of legalization and all these, all the things that are being discussed. All those lawsuits were thrown out because they were ridiculous. So there's a credibility issue that I, that I see. The fear of her, hurting the fish. No, I know it's fish too. So I guess everybody gets a chance to talk except the ones that make the vote. So...
Uh, listen, if you're expecting us to make a decision tonight, however it may go down, give us that opportunity, please. You're out of order. It's not civil, and it will not be. Just quiet your voices a bit, please, please. And that has just got stuck in the mouth.
Yes, it is. Just get him out of here.
If you, if you say another word, I'm gonna ask him to escort him out of the room. All right? You ask us to come to a decision tonight, I suppose. We may or we may not. But we're not gonna be able to even come to a decision if you do not respect our right and opportunity to make and have dialogue with payersels.
Get her out of here. Get her out of here.
That is entirely out of order.
Well, she lives, she's about to swim anyway.
Um, at this point, that's it. Staff has given us five options. And the reason why I would like to support option number five is, and this looks at in our discussion of having a committee to look at the options, it actually gives us a little bit of this. It gives us the option to look at, at the different fluoride possibilities to get it to people who need it and who want it, while at the same time, it stops the fluoridation of the water system. We've got until May 18th. That is plenty of time for this committee, pro-fluoride folks and folks against fluoride, to discuss and find ways of getting fluoride to people that want it. Okay? So again, I would highly support, and I would hope that the council knows that this is one way to be able to address both issues, to find options. Like you said, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let's figure out the different options that are available while looking at option five.
You've already voted now.
The only way I see to have a win-win here is to remove the fluoride from the water. The... The moving forward of such as number two, an offset, is gonna be afforded to the rich and upper middle class. Those units are expensive. They're expensive to continue to maintain them. Providing a non-floridated water source to the city residents that want it is not even reasonable. It's, I don't even see it in the realm of the city being able to do that. The city is already has debt. We don't need to be taking on any more debt. Coming up with option number five, I do agree with Councilmember Brooke that it is providing us, possibly with a win-win. I would like to think that the American Dental Association and the Washington Dental Service would be willing to meet somewhere in the middle and provide some funding on education. And it's my understanding right now that it's all or nothing on the fluoridated water. And that's, uh, not, I believe, in the best interest of the public. I think the best interest of the public is education and some funding for that education.
Can we reconsider this motion that's in front of us right now? You guys talking about option number five? I'd like to point out to the folks here tonight that, again, the first part of option number five is stop fluoridation of the municipal water supply after May 18th, 2016, then replace it with an oral healthcare initiative. Again, that's something that could come through the UAC. We've got a group set up. I would be very interested to see, to see what the various local dentists, as well as state dental associations, what they could bring to the table. It's, it's nice to hear that we've got a couple of local dental providers that do take Medicaid. I'm not so sure that that reflects the greater population of dentists in our, uh, city. So I, again, on number five, I would vote in support of.
And to be clear, I'm all for studying this stuff. And if a committee wants to get together and continue looking at alternates down the road, that's fine with me. I will not support number five due to the four sentences that stop the fluoridation. I made up my decision on that after two years of research and I'm not changing what position I have.
I'm, will exercise my opportunity and way in here.
Pray for you, back there.
I, um, I am deeply saddened we are at this point in our life. You know, I love this town, as I think all of you do. But, um, because we, we have so many other issues to talk about, some of them were brought up earlier in our meeting. Uh, we have a horrendous, horrific substance abuse at the Democratic, uh, we have, we have heard time after time after time that we need new jobs. We need to grow our economy. We need to bring family waste jobs here. We need to provide for those that are struggling. And there's many more. Those are a couple, three that are on my mind. But what really troubles me most is we're, we're constantly getting into these arguments and divisions in this town. And we've gotta stop. We just, we just have to stop because we're not moving forward. Town is not moving forward. You know, I wish, ladies and gentlemen, all of us, that if we could... Can you imagine how much good we could have happened here in town? If this committee could wrap around itself, our arms are collective arms, our collective will, our passion, our intellect, our caring, wrap it around the issues of homelessness or the epidemic that's been following this community as well as many across the country, you know, drug abuse. What would happen, ladies and gentlemen, if we actually could be on the same page whatsoever protecting these issues? I also have to say that I cannot support, um, any motion that might be, any decision tonight that would go forward that would have a cloud of bullying, intimidation, ranker, angry voices. And that's not the way I work in law. Okay, I won't do that.
I'm leaving.
I, I just, I just won't do that. You have to know, it's a matter of principles with me. We will never, ever, I was quoted, it's an actor quote. I want this city to be a city that recognizes city of excellence at its core, every place. I've got what we see at the college, what we see at the hospital, said to him. But, but we're, I am not going to be intimidated. I'm not going to be bullied. I'm not going to be intimidated in any way into a decision. And I'm very, my opinion is, you can argue with me, argue if you want to. You can continue to talk to me. And I will tell you publicly now, and I will tell you privately, that so long as we have this cloud of threatening to turn our governance upside down, which would be a terribly advanced position, I, I cannot support a motion that would go forward that would have the threat and the conundrum caused by the angry voices and intimidation and voting that has represented far, far too much of those that would do with fluoride. We could do better than this, ladies and gentlemen. I, listen, listen, listen. Hold on. I have, we have given you collectively hours, hours of our time.
Hours of our time.
If, if you're gonna disrespect me, you're not doing yourselves any favors. Yes, it works my way as it was free. And right now, you're not, you're not getting, you're disrespecting my right to speak.
You're over moral line.
I, listen, it's a matter of integrity for me. And I'm not going to be, I'm just not gonna respond to that kind of chatter, just not, does not lead to good decisions. At least not in my mind, it doesn't. I have appreciated Mr. Collins, no, wait, I'm gonna go back several minutes. Mr. Collins and, and Sissy have promoted a conversation, I'll call it for lack of a better, an ad hoc committee to further discuss, discuss other options. And it's so doing, I would hope, and lessen the anger and division that causes the whole matter. Now, my, Sissy, and all due respect, my concern about that is that it would be wholly under the banner of responding to my being, responding to the intimidation and the conundrum that represents that. If we can agree, I would hope, to Mr. Collins and to the, to the extent he could, have this, we do have time. We have, we do not have to make a decision tonight. We do not have to. I would like us to form an ad hoc committee to further... There's been several very valid... Mr. Karen, I don't know where Mr. Karen is, if he's still here. He brought up a very interesting point. I know nothing about this. And he brought up some issues regarding the legality of our existing contract. I, I think we need, I, I foresee what I hear more about that. And others, there have, maybe another point said, what was, was it Dan or, or if you brought the issue of another water? How do you put that?
Water filtration system, I'm sure.
But, but, but if, I know somebody, when somebody brought up a point of, so maybe, you know, maybe some other way to do the digital filtration. Anyway, I, I'm not gonna take time to try to find that now. I would like to speak to, I would hope we could speak to, uh, Mr. Mayor. Go into a quiet room with some pros and some anti-sites in the next, well within the next 30 days and see if we can find a, we'll call it option six, whatever option we want to call it. And, and this is not to make business, to be rankers, to be angry, uh, fine, that's where I'm at.
I'd actually like to address, you addressing our citizenry. Our current fluoride contract doesn't expire until May, yet, was it two weeks ago, four weeks ago? Four of our council members chose to renew a contract that's five months ahead of time. So please explain your rationale. We hear a lot about knee-jerk reactions. And I actually point that out as a prime example of what occurred for something that's five months in the future. So I think rather than talking to the citizens that way, that maybe you might wanna address your choice to address something that's five months ahead of time.
I saw Brad standing up first, and I'll go back to you. And I will ask you to share your comments before I answer these questions.
Okay. I'm going back to the vote. I did not understand in that vote that we were continuing a contract. I thought all we did was we decided to let fluoridation continue. And, you know, it seems to me that there isn't a contract, there isn't a deadline beyond that. And, you know, future councils could decide to do something different.
That's right.
You know, I don't think we're, we're starting a new contract with anybody.
That's right.
I'd like to read about that. Councilmember Collins, I believe the motion on the floor was a 10-year extension.
Of fluoride.
Of fluoride.
Not the contract.
That's right. So that actually became our... So that actually became our new contract with an ending from the day the motion was approved.
Again, I don't believe that we can commit future councils to a 10-year ending. I think the council...
I could probably address this somewhat. It was, you're all correct, actually, but let me explain it. You did, you did as a council, extended out 10 years, however you go. But a future council, or this council, can change that because there is no contract. The con... In fact, you could stop fluoridation tomorrow, the problem is, the problem is there would be a financial penalty, I believe, based on the contract. So you do have a contract right now that expires in May. If you eliminate fluoridation early from that contract, there is a significant financial penalty, and that's why that date has been used. Beyond that, again, the council did extend it for 10 years, expressing their wishes, but a future council action can change that without a financial penalty.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. McKinnon. I also to speak to that, when the motion was originally made, it was to extend water fluoridation for 10 years. There was nothing said about signing contracts, there was nothing said about extending an existing contract. It's, once again, it's another fabrication to make it sound like the way a certain group wants it to sound. And it's not happening. So thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Mayor, I want to speak, please.
Yes.
Okay. Looks at, SAG has put a lot of thought into option number five. And one of the beauties about option number five goes the same way as whether we can stop it, as whether we can start it. So option number five says, look, come of May 18th, we're going to stop fluoridation. But, starting tomorrow, we can have an oral health care initiative that can look at all the options, that can give us possibly different ways of getting fluoride to the people we need it. Should May 18th come around and we don't have good options, we can always restart fluoridation. So I think option number five allows us the time without dealing with, without feeling like we have to do this. But it gives us the option to start it if we do not have options that we don't feel like are meeting the needs of the community. So that's why it's, I feel like, you know, city staff has spent really a lot of time working on this option. They really embedded in with the whole staff of the city. And it is an amazing option that allows us the freedom to restart this if we want to. So this is why I really would urge council to vote for option number five.
Well, option number five starts with stop fluoridation of the municipal supply, which is not what the council voted to do. And the city staff recommended it, and this is the words of city staff, because they were not opening the door and not going down the path of the draconian change of government. There's, we have been threatened with a change of government. I'd like to stick to one issue at a time and decide the fluoride issue on its merits. Our town was founded with medical care, the best medical care. In 1862, we became the city of Port Angeles officially, and we got a hospital and doctor. And when we were in 1890, when we were a cooperative colony, we had, we had a Dr. Lewis as our doctor. And 2000, and early 2006, we had our first Port Angeles, 1906, we had our first general hospital. And then, now we have Olympic medical care. We wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be a town without best practice medical care. That's how we've grown, and we're looking for best practice medical care. So this is an issue that we voted on this. And, you know, I don't want to color it with threats, I don't want to color it with this intimidation. We just stick to the issue, decide the issue, and then deal with other issues that come along. So I believe in option number one. We set the precedent for being intimidated and threat to changing our vote. What are we going to do next year?
Thank you, Sherri.
Let's not listen to the people, let's not start that practice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like a moment. So, I hope that it's become quite apparent this evening that the people are going to have their way.
One way or another.
No, the majority now, not some people, the majority that chose to respond to our survey that we as a council collectively sent out and asked the people to participate in. So, this, I admire the man I heard this from, but politics is there to compromise. And when we ask the people what they want, and yet we refuse to let them have what we've asked them to take the time out of their life. I, for example, drove my survey down, walked into the, over at the utility department, and I put my survey in a box. I know what it's like to participate in a democracy, I think it's a great honor. But again, I ask council to remember, we've had senior staff sign this. So we should acknowledge what our staff is trying to tell us in this form of government. And that is, we have a strong, a great likelihood of two years of a completely different makeup of our city government. I just hope that if folks do go down that road, it is going to be a two-year process. But also, four of us, I don't know if that's how it worked out, but four of us right here, we're all up for reelection, the four of us, starting one, two, three, and the mayor position, in two years. It's going to take the same amount of time. I just make sure if that's what you want to do, is change our government, realize the power that you put in one set of hands.
Finally, I agree with Lee on that issue. I tell you what, going through the whole threat of change in government would be just a terrible thing. If you look at what that means, if there's a whole ramification, it would be terrible for all of you to accomplish that, if you've ever looked at it. And in the same amount of time that it takes to accomplish that, like you're saying, we're all up for reelection. I hope you've got a few people ready to run.
We do.
Great, that's good, there are going to be some open seats I've got. So that's not an issue, there's no need to make threats like that, you know? Anyway, I want to acknowledge an agreement between us soon.
Well, I think I would agree with the man, and appreciate the spirit that Lee has injected here. You know, I... I'm not going to, I'm not going to run for reelection, I'm not going to... Positive on that, no? Okay, feel better about that if you want to. But, but we... The room needs to be quiet and whoever is speaking. I hope you will, eventually will. Okay? So that you're actually shaking your head, thank you for that, that are. I can't, I considered, I've had a lot of conversations. You didn't, you... Your station still stays up? Call me tomorrow. I still get me trouble by this concern about intimidation. I experienced it, oh, listen. I'm going to say another word and we're just going to, I'm going to go in for, until, you get it, okay, guys? You got to get it. I'm going to be very firm with this, you just cannot be simple. Quiet the voices. We have been extraordinarily patient with you. And that cannot be, no, that cannot be argued. Hours, I have already hours spent. Tonight has been, in fact, it's been nearly four hours. So, let me finish then, and then I'll turn back to you. Until, until I'm convinced, and I need to be well worth it, Mr. Mayor. Now, as long as there's this cloud of threatening and hanging over our heads, some of us, that we're going to throw all of you out on the sidewalk. You have a chance. Lee is perfectly right. Why don't you just let the system work? The system, oh! You, you have a, you, we, there's a... If you want to have, if you want to take the time, actually, you probably get the way you need to be. If you feel the way you, you can get there faster, but I just let the system work. And, yes, seriously. And so, and so why don't you just... I mean, it's such, it's so hypocritical and convoluted that you recommend being a, and I'm going here again, a draconian approach. You don't need to do that. We can get back to talking together about some really important issues and let the process work. You may be right, there may be four, there may be four really good candidates who have an interest in occupying these seats. You could have them. Let it happen. Go by it politely, go by the way the system is intended to be done.
Okay, so to kind of wrap this up and get off the stick. I would be in full support if Brad and Sissy wanted to, and anybody else wanted to get out of that hot committee, you know, or whatever awkward direction there is to do that, to study those kind of things. In the meantime, while that committee would be studying, I would suggest that we either stay with our original vote that we made, or re-vote for option number one, which would continue the fluoride. After an ad hoc committee is done, the study, they can always come back and revisit it. There's a motion, let's find out if we have a second, and if you want to do it. There, that's my motion.
All right, well, I would entertain the motion. Do you want to go left, or right? Okay, so there is a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, can I even clarify?
Before we go ahead, I want, we need to have further discussion, so. We want your attention.
Mr. Mayor, can we get clarification on what the motion was?
Yeah, could you just take that?
Yes, the motion would be, has written in option one, continue water fluoridation until June 30th, 2026, as approved by the council on December 15th.
How is that different from the previous motion passed?
There is no, it's reaffirming the motion. I mean, it's one of five, it's one of five options.
It's already been enacted by council, I don't understand.
Well, then we don't have to do anything.
Thank you.
We've already done it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on option number five.
What, what, I asked for, I asked for a discussion.
Yeah, we have a question, we're here, we can't be... We had a motion put forward, we need some, is there any further discussion or?
Was the motion wrong?
If that motion would be a moot point, and not, and it would be redundant, then I'll withdraw that motion.
Let's put it in my comment. My comment is, when Sissy and I got together, what we were trying to do is to proceed ahead without some kind of division. If we vote for fluoridation again, it's no different than if we vote against fluoridation. I mean, there's still going to be that division. Give the chance for a committee to come back with something. My biggest worry is that whatever we come back with won't cost $100,000 for 10 years, it will cost $4 million for 10 years. And, you know, it's just like the councillor Meredith said, you know, if we can't put water filtration in everybody's house that doesn't want fluoridation, it's just too expensive. I don't know if $4 million is too expensive, I don't even know if it would be $4 million. But that's what the purpose of this committee would be. And we could bring it back in, you know, I would say, the second meeting in February, which is well in advance of the May 18th. And, you know, Sissy and I have agreed to try to work together to come up with alternatives and weapon, examine what those would be. And, you know, I think that voting on the motion number one, or voting on the motion number three, or voting on the motion number five would have the same effect of continuing the division without giving us a chance to see if there's some alternative.
Well, I'd love to speak to that, in that, not necessarily. Because we can have that committee meeting, we can have this oral health initiative happen, and this committee work to find options. Now, just because we say we're going to stop fluoridation on May 18th, 2016, if the committee ends up with recommendations one way or another, we have plenty of time to change that decision. So this is one way to let people know, hey, look, we are listening to you. It's a way of saying, look, we are listening to staff. We have options that we were going to discuss, we bring people who have ways. I mean, let's say Europe doesn't fluoridate their water, there's options out there. So how do we get fluoride to the people that need it? The idea here is that we improve the oral health of our people. That's really the reason why we're having this discussion, we want better oral health for our people. How do we get there? There's many options out there. This gives us the chance to do that. Okay, so for that, then I would make the motion number five.
So we have a motion on the table here, and I'd like to cast a foot in discussions on the motion before I talk to the person.
So the motion is to undo the previous vote, but we can vote back in if we don't like the committee's recommendation. This is partially confusing. We're going in a direction that we don't have the answers yet, so I have a virtual meeting discussion with the ad hoc committee. But, you know, we've made choices, we just can't make on back the previous one.
Yeah, I want to add that this is what wonderful discussion does, it brings points that we didn't know before. During this discussion, we learned so many things. So bringing it open to relook at the decisions we made is always a good thing. We let, you know, that's it as to not doing it under threat, that's fine. But it's an option right now that we have, that works for the people, that works for staff, that works for us to be able to come up with a really decent decision. So it doesn't negate anything that we've done before, because we still have fluoride until May 18th. So we have plenty of time. And so I would suggest that we move forward this way, so that we can get, so we can move forward.
My main reason for actually seconding this is actually to acknowledge the people and to bring down the rhetoric. Like council member Brooke states, we have until May 18th to go back to this, and that's what we choose to do. If you want to continue to have this turnout every two weeks for the indefinite future of city council, I don't think we're going to have a chance to talk about homelessness issues. I don't think we're going to have a chance to talk about the suicides that occur on Eighth Street bridges. I think we deserve to do a better job for the citizens. Please recognize our citizens, please recognize senior staff, what they're trying to tell the majority of council that continues to support fluoridation. the majority of council that continues to support fluoridation.
So, last August or September, we, as a council unanimously agreed to undergo the process that we discussed, a three-part process. Immediately after the vote, to do that, you stood your ground, and you have the right to do it, to say, I'm throwing out two-thirds of the process that we just agreed to do, and we go in one direction only, and you had that right to do it. But, to imply, and then have the process come back, and through your own admission, tell us it was a tomly, gosh, and flawed survey?
No, it was a compromised survey. It was a compromised political solution, because again, we couldn't go to the general election ballot. And I do, it is on Stephanie's recordings, and that's what I love, the best thing about Clallum Public Eye. Everybody's words can go back, and it doesn't matter who the reporter is, or how they wanna choose to report it to the public, they can have their own opinion about what was said during that alleged meeting. So, yeah, I am a plumber, I'm not a doctor, I'm not authorized to write any prescriptions, I'm not authorized to demand you take any drugs. I am authorized to represent the people, and I did state during that meeting that I've listened to this since day one of councils taking, taking my seat of office. I, again, on Clallum Public Eye stated that this is, each side needs to educate the public. That is recorded somewhere. So, I beg everybody, go look at it, this, this is up to the public, I've turned that process over through compromise. Through compromise, I've turned this over to the public.
We're not in disagreement with that. What we're in disagreement is, is that we all, as a council, agreed to look at all three parts, and you're expecting us to totally disregard two-thirds of it?
No. That's not true.
It's very true.
Exactly.
They're self-presented on both sides. If, if you think that you're qualified to write a prescription and tell people what they should do...
These doctors are, every doctor is. For a patient.
I stated my reasons, I work within council guidelines, I left it to the people, I stated that. I didn't get my choice of a survey or a vote. I had to work within what council came up with.
And you chose not to.
That's right.
Again, I stated my position.
After we agreed to do it all as a collective group.
I didn't agree to the three parts, sticking to the three part, I agreed, I made my statement earlier.
It was an unanimous decision.
Absolutely.
We voted to have a three-part process, you agreed to it.
Exactly, with the added stipulation that, again, it's...
But you didn't vote that.
Mr. Gase, can this be written?
It's on public record, Mr. Gase, in case you left there.
Your vote is on the record, that's right.
Absolutely, as well as my comments, thank you.
Mr. Congress. I assume we're gonna vote here soon, and I just wanted to say that regardless of the outcome of the vote, I am willing to continue the effort that Sissy and I started, to try to find out if there's an alternate way that we can provide the care that's as safe and effective as water fluoridation. And if we can figure that out, great. So, regardless of the vote, turns out.
Okay, could I have that, Mr. Kirk, to read, read the rest of the motion?
Is it moved by Councilmember Brooks and seconded by Councilmember Wettin to stop fluoridation of the municipal water supply after May 18th, 2016, and replace it with an oral healthcare initiative ad hoc committee?
All right. Everybody in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed, please say nay.
No.
I ask for a break, Ms. Mayor.
Put your hands up.
Right, it's your idea.
So, um, North People, you want to take a break, or continue this discussion? We'll be returning at 5:00, 10:00, 10:20.
Extend our meeting past 10:00 p.m.
I'll second your motion.
And I did not notice the time it was, I was in the grocery in the commentary. So, always in favor of the motion to extend this meeting beyond 10:00 p.m.
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, I also would like to make a motion that we reform this ad hoc committee to discuss fluoride and look for options.
Second. Always in favor of this, Congress, there's further discussion on this motion. Hearing that, ah, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, the signal in time. What exactly is this makeup gonna look like?
Hopefully, it's gonna be half fluoride, half non-fluoride vote, so we can have a really good discussion and look at the options that are possible. So, hopefully, some practical votes from, you know, a little bit of everything.
Will this, uh, concerns again from a book previous UAC, will this include an invitation to the UAC committee?
Oh, sure. I think we could do that.
That's a, that's a problem. Uh, Sissy, before, I mean, I should first, um, how, you have some thoughts, even immediate thoughts, in how we go through the methodology of forming this committee? I mean, yes, it should be both sides represented, but what, any more specific?
You know, principally, I don't have a real set methodology, and I just hope that staff can help us with that, but it could be something that we definitely need to be drawn, or unless you write any ideas specifically.
We bring that on the future agenda, so we have some specifics.
We can do that.
Because I, I can't put in something I don't know what.
I would like to post call the vote until we have a committee.
Until we have some specifics on the committee plan.
And I, and given that, I'll, I'll be stretching back to that. This matter, we have some time to work, but I, I can't, it's a second meeting.
How about?
I would, I would prefer to have a sooner than later.
How about if we say that we will vote to form a committee, and then the staff will bring this back, the form of that committee, that way we can vote on the format of it, but people will know that we're definitely going to be discussing this.
That's right. Any further discussion? No, you wanna retake yours?
Uh, that we will be forming a committee to discuss the options for fluoride.
And makeup.
And makeup, yeah. We will discuss the makeup of it at a different meeting.
Everybody understand that motion is? Any further discussion?
I'll second. I thought the motion changed somewhat, thank you.
Well, those who made the motion and seconded, yeah.
We did the changes, other changes.
Okay, no further question, no further comment I'm hearing, so we'll ask the question, all those in favor of the motion, if you say aye.
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 And I'm voting no, simply because I don't have enough information.
Well, we'll move to that one quickly. Okay, uh, we are at agenda, we had a little bit items on the agenda, future, if we wanna eat, and set agenda, I believe, and, and that is, number one is the expenditure approval list from 121915 to 1816 in the amount of $399,000, $999,655.38.
Mr. Mayor, once again, I am an employee of Brooklyn Brook, and I do see again that they are on the expenditure list. I'm just a salaried employee, I have nothing to gain from this, and it was a pre-authorized contract before I started. And that also applies to number five. I have number five.
Can I make a comment that, uh, I was accused of patting Mr. Mayor at the last meeting about this, and I was not doing it at all, I was concerned that certainly made it, hopefully not a problem for his company, that's all. And so, I trust Mr. Meredith and the City Attorney to decide when that happens, but since he was new, that was the only reason, it was a caution to make sure he didn't harm his company. I certainly have nothing to challenge Mr. Meredith on.
Number two. Hi, good.
Councilmember Meredith, I'm not clear of your intentions, do you intend to vote, or would you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your concern. Uh, number two, E2, 26th game United Way Contract for Health and Human Services funding. Uh, E3 Composite Recycling Technology Center, CRTC Board of Directors and Recommendation. Number four, an agreement with System Design West LLC. Number five, the Georgiana Sewer and Stormwater Improvement Project, number WW1415 and DR0315, final acceptance. Number six, the North Olympic Library System Building Transfer. Motion to approve?
I've got a couple of questions. Actually, um, one on the Georgiana Sewer and Stormwater Improvement, if in the future, not tonight, if we can get the percentages and what was paid by the hospital, what's paid by the city, I would appreciate that.
We will do, and also, like you had a request that we had a discussion with the OMC, we did, they listened to us, their project is also in very early stages, they're having the same problems, soil problems and cost overruns. We did agree to, again, meet at the end of their project to discuss cost shares, if there was any funding available, so it's still an obligation, we did have discussions per your request, but there was no agreement.
Thank you. And then the last one is number six, that library system turning it over, just a quick question. I mean, it seems like this is a pretty much standard, because that was, it's on their land, and, you know, we built it. Is there any, any reason why we should not do this?
We, I do not believe we have an option, because in the agreement with North Olympic, ah, North, North Olympic Library System, we can either lease the building to them, or at their option, they could request the transfer, they have requested, and we have no legitimate reason to deny their request.
Okay, yeah, I gather that that was the case, but I just wondered whether there's any reason why we shouldn't do that.
It's a relatively standard-type action for cities that have annexed into a library district, that eventually the library facilities leave city ownership and move over to the library district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gase, to make a motion, would you like to continue that?
Sure.
I think that, but, the motion has been made, a second, except if considered, yeah, and I'm ready, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close in?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're on to I, under considerations, we had covered the, at great length, the type one. I2, I6 is where it was in practice. So, um...
Mr. Mayor, Council, before you tonight, as requested by Council at the January 15th, Council did ask that staff bring back to Council more information regarding the Clallum County Economic Development Corporation. Staff has provided the Council with three options for Council consideration this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions on those options. A detailed end of year report has been provided to Council, both in the packet, as well as an issue to that report on your diets, as well as additional details in a periodical produced by the Clallum County Corporation. Then I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff, or is, I'm ready.
Um, I just wanted to indicate that I believe it's important that we remain participants in this as a government entity. I believe that the EDC has done a great job of moving towards private sector funding for this organization. There was question whether or not I should be voting on this, because I had previously been the city representative on the EDC, but I was representing the city, not the EDC. And that representation, I believe, ended on the 7/31st. So, I think it's important that the interaction ought to be approved, so that we would continue the party to what the county and the board and the state are doing, and well, the city courts is opted to not be a part of it.
Well, um, I know I've spoken about this in the past, and I know through our priority settings, that we decided we were gonna pull away from this, but I did have a very interesting conversation with, oh, I just forgot his name, anyway, but this gentleman who explained to me a little bit that he was feeling that the, the way that things have been put together, that they needed just a little more time, and I thought, I don't know, I mean, we haven't got any, so, I mean, at this point, I said, originally, I would have absolutely said option three. Today, I'm, I'm more leaning towards actually option two, but giving him a very small amount of money, because I don't think that the $15,000 is, I don't think we're gonna afford the $15,000, and I don't think we've seen enough coming out of there. But I do know that this would be the absolute, absolute last year that I would ever support anything like this, unless we have some major measurables that come out of this. That, as is, as is, we're gonna be asking for the measurables before we give them the money, as I understand option two to be. So, um, so I would either with option two or option three.
Councilmember Collins, I'd ask, have you identified any additional income for city level, for the city actually that would offset this $15,000, or under option to another proposed dollar amount to the EDC?
The answer to that question is no, I have not identified that. Just as with the Humane Society, I rely on staff to determine how that might best be done. As far as a smaller contribution, I can understand Coach Brooke's, or Councilmember Brooks' comments, and I think that the number, this one, over $5,000 or $10,000 is certainly reasonable.
Why I ask is, what we, we're talking about other items, and we're gonna work on all the time as council, so, it wasn't too many weeks ago, it seems like, that we had a lot of Olympic Peninsula, like Humane Society supporters in here, with all of our cats, dogs, birds, turtles, fish. I'm afraid of this $15,000 budget yet. We've already, to back up a little bit, on our 2016 budget, we had approved a cut to Pharaoh Marine Life Center, United Way, PA Fine Arts Center, city youth and family recreation programs. Through the other action of our community, we did restore, only though in 2016, the full amount, promised amount to the Columbus of Humane Society. Yet, the 2017 Humane Society contribution is still on the budget table to be cut, and is anticipated to be cut. For those that participated in the priority setting, again, the lowest priority was funding for outside agencies, according to council survey. Unless I can find some money for permanent severe cancer, I'd, this whole seat are supporting this.
I have a question.
I actually would support option one, because the Clallum County Economic Development Council, we get the greatest benefit when they're trying to encourage companies to we get the greatest benefit when they're trying to encourage companies to come to Port Angeles and work on jobs here. Port Angeles gets the largest share of the benefit. We have to grow our economy, we have to put out the seeds that grow into economic development. The reason we're cutting the Fine Arts Center and the other areas, the reason we're cutting that is we have a decrease in sales tax revenues. We must look forward to increasing our economy, increasing our sales tax, increasing our jobs to increase our revenue, so therefore we can increase our support to, we, I don't want to manage the decline of Port Angeles, I want to manage the economic growth of Port Angeles. They worked hard to help bring our airlines here, starting March, we have new airlines, they worked hard on that, in partnership with the port, and so many of us did. But Port Angeles is the center.
That here's a project, you get this, all of this additional money, it will require, here's a project, the request is for X, council do you approve?
Okay, so council would still have the yea or nay on spending that $7,500, and we would not be anything?
The $7,500 is, I would contend if council approves that, that the city manager would have the ability then to release those funds, if an eligible project or opportunity came by. If it was funds over and above the $7,500, like to extend utilities into the site, or some other item, I can't quite think of that, but there may be some things, then that would require separate council action. Because those funds are currently not budgeted, so if they're coming out of the utilities, they would come out of the utilities current expense budget, that would only take four votes. If additional money were sought out of the general fund, they would come, that would require five affirmative votes.
Now, I would actually support this if council gets to decide where that $7,500 gets spent. Because I do know that the city manager has the option to spend that amount of money, if we're given the okay. But because it's economic development, and we have lost faith in the past economic development efforts, that I think council needs to be able to say yea or nay on the options of spending that $7,500. So if that could be added to the motion, the option two, saying that council will yea or nay the spending of the $7,500 depending on the project, then I will support option two. Because in that way, you know, we can decide whether it's worth it, we're giving them one more year. Like I said, I was never going to vote for option two until I had this conversation and thought, well, they aren't moving forward, they may make a difference. But I want council to have total control over that spending of that $7,500.
So council, clarification would help relative to the contract. I think with the intent of option two, it would be relative to the $7,500, that the $7,500 be a direct contract amount, that an additional $7,500 would be provided upon a specific job-related opportunity that's presented.
An additional sum? No, I mean, I'm talking about.
So that there is one, there is one set dollar amount, and then there's additional incentive-based dollar amount that would be provided upon a successful new employer coming into town, or a successful expansion of this.
And that, the way I understand it, that there wouldn't be a first $7,500. The $7,500 is only for incentive public infrastructure, so we would not pay EDC anything. If an employer came in and said, look, we need this, and, you know, it's a good infrastructure development investment for us to give, I'd say, yes, let's bring it to council, let the council decide. But I do not want to give $7,500 to the EDC to do as they wish. I want to have control of using that as an incentive for a new development, is that? Is that clear?
I don't believe that we'd be participants if we are only providing the infrastructure.
Then in that case, I'm happy to pull out. So that's, I guess that's my compromise. I want to have control of that money as incentive for a new business. And so that way, the EDC brings someone in, and they can bring someone and say, look, Port Angeles is willing to help you. And we as a city say, yeah, we're willing to help a new business come in, or a new employer come in and make changes. But I, but that's the way I would want to participate.
If we're willing to help a new business that wants to relocate here, in the tune of $7,500, why would we want to tie their hands and attempt to micromanage the details of what business? Are we going to be concerned about where they located then?
No, 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 this is something that, because EDC has failed us in the past.
We have, we have someone on staff that's responsible for our economic development, we already paid Nathan. Why are we considering spending additional money for that? If they don't want us at the table to participate in a discussion for the greater community, then so be it. I think they need us, we are the largest city on the spending slope, and so long.
Oh, that's a great attitude, just hustle these businesses down to California.
Right there is our man.
This is the one.
Right there is our man that we pay for, Nathan West.
Well, of course, but every community works with investors and relocators for incentives and things like that. He doesn't take this out of his salary to do that.
We pay Nathan to participate in those sort of meetings.
I think you're missing the whole concept.
I have not missed the whole concept, I go back to the original legislature charge.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I understood Mr. West correctly, if we don't participate, then we are outside of the EDC. And so I don't think you can argue that we're participating with the EDC if we aren't contributing to the EDC.
I would acknowledge the fact that the man who's, we may mention Nathan being our guy, right? But our guy is recommending to us one of these options. Can I add anything?
Certainly that is correct, I think that participation is very important. I do think it is important to recognize that there have been some successes in 2015. I think if you look at the work plan, there's a lot to be said for some of those accomplishments. And again, I think that it's important to at least participate. And as the EDC bylaws are written, you must have some sort of contribution in order to be an active member of the EDC board. And so that is correct, what Councilmember Collins mentioned, is that our representation on the EDC board disappears if we do not provide some sort of funding to contribute to the organization.
Is there a dollar amount that we have to contribute?
I'm not aware that there is a minimum.
So if we say we will participate for one, $1 to the EDC, but yet we will have $7,500 for incentives. Because in that way, we're participating and we're bringing the business, I mean, the people who really need the incentives are the businesses coming in here, right?
We're not paying anything else.
Right, so that's why.
You're giving $7,500 in this example, only in the event that they come through with a successful business that wants to relocate. If they don't do their job, we don't pay anything.
Well, that's what I asked, and I was told that that's not true, I was, I was told, see, that's what I thought.
Okay, so we have a conflict of what we heard.
Correct, so.
One more time, we could hear almost seven hours.
Right, I know.
We started before you guys got here.
So, well, as I understand it, that we need to have a contribution to EDC, and then separately from that is the contribution for the public infrastructure towards an incentive, right?
That's correct.
So there's two things, so one we have to, so that's what I'm saying, a dollar to EDC and $7,500 for an incentive. And so that way, we are participating with EDC, and we still have the incentive for new businesses to come in here and relocate.
And I'd like to clarify, council, you don't have to do it that way, I don't, I don't want to indicate that that's a requirement, it's simply, that was one of the recommendations that we put in the staff's board of commissioners, is that if you choose not to sit with the $15,000, then you can do a partial payment towards $15,000, have the remainder of it be an incentive to be earned.
Okay, that clarifies why the option was there, you know.
And I believe that, you know, one of the concerns that we all have, and it was expressed by council, is our priority setting process, and going down that cylinder. So I believe by a reduced amount, that's consistent with what we've done with the other organizations, will at least be consistent with the priority setting process too, the full amount would not.
And $7,500 would be a good compromise, but we would be undermining the EDC if the city of Port Angeles were not participating. And it would be, really look bad that the city of Port Angeles is not participating in an economic development council that works with the Department of Commerce to get leads, to, and look, to work with people who are looking to relocate. It really leaves us out in the cold, and we look bad. Plus, we don't want these opportunities to bring in new business so we can further our economic base.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I believe there's a motion on the floor, is that correct?
Well, could you have a new statement?
That's correct, Councilmember Collins made a motion to go with option two, with the $7,000 amount, that was second in the conference.
Okay.
And the point of order, I guess, my understanding is that the city manager would determine based on the performance or an opportunity that we then provide the $7,500 to the EDC. Exactly. Is that what was suggested?
Well, again, council, council could determine or suggest that we incorporate the contract, whether it go to the city manager or come back to council for that additional incentive amount. But again, I think it's important to clarify, the $7,500 would be intended to be the base amount.
Okay, my understanding is correct.
Okay, everybody on the floor? So, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Those possibly say no?
No.
So we have failed to get the majority. I have to express my disappointment. This is a chairman asking.
It's especially bad because there's a lot of people looking at Port Angeles now that have been enticed. There's a lot of people that have started to make the process, and now they just look at the fact that they don't care. And that's exactly what's being said.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to return to our agenda so we can get out of here this evening, thank you.
So we are, at that point in the agenda, we are on I3. And as close to committee board and commission assignments, I, both, each of you have had a chance to review those. I would, I could, need to have a discussion about the committee assignments. If any, I made those, those X's where they are in consultation with each of you a few days ago, and with a question of a click or mark. There is, before we, we need to address the bottom of the page, it says, propose committee, Trustlands Advisory Committee. I left that blank, it does request that the mayor, they, they have actually had a committee representative on that. I have a stack of stuff I received from the meeting I attended. I need to say this before I have a broader discussion on this committee assignment. And this is a really important committee. It needs to, needs to discuss some really important topics that represent really big numbers. I think that calculation has been suggested that the irrearch that has to build up over time is something that it had $15,000. There are a number of, number of industry representatives that fill that room, and I was attending on Friday last. I highly recommend that we consider a representative to this committee. With that said, I'm going to take further discussion on this committee before we get to the bottom.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to recognize that county commissioner, Bill Peaches, and county attorney, they also be interested in this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to first open the discussion with some of the issues that were brought up about this committee. And one of the things that I did was, I looked at the rules or procedure, and we have nothing in here that states how, you know, one of us fills some of these appointments. And so I thought that one of the things that we should do is ask staff to make, to put in a procedure in here that clarifies it. Because I know that there was some, some question as to, well, who gets to do it, how was it brought forward, when was it not brought forward? All these kind of nebulous things that kind of took a little bit of transparency away. So what I would like to do is ask staff if they can please come up with a procedure that would make it completely transparent, and so that everybody knows when we're asked to participate in a committee, or when we volunteered to participate in a committee, and how the whole council owes on this, so that, so that some of that cloud can go away, and we can be very clear and transparent. So, so with, besides that, I do believe that this is a really important committee. I believe that this committee is, it's true that, I know that there's some of the state lines, I'm not exactly sure if, some of the money is used for this, which is usually for public infrastructure and for businesses as well. So I think this is a very, very important committee. So, and I would, if I may, if you're disturbed, that if the council would be happy to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just have a comment about that. In the past, the way committee assignments are made is that the mayor coordinates that, and he asks us all to which committees we're interested in. Obviously, if more than one council person is interested in a committee, somebody has to decide how that's done. And it's usually the mayor who makes, forwards the recommendation then to the council, and then we vote on that. But it's, it's a fairly transparent process, but it involves all the council. You're not generally going to be asked to, not be on any committees, in fact, usually it's the other way around. The council people are actually supposed to be out of a fair amount of the committees, so all the work doesn't fall on one or two of us. And it's the probably of the mayor to put together this, and then that's how it comes before the council. I believe that's what was done in this particular case as well.
Councilmember Collins, maybe you could elaborate on past practice of council for new committees under consideration by council. I have not really addressed this.
I think it would be the same process that.
Maybe or no? I'm asking a direct question, you think or no?
I'm saying, I believe it would follow the same process, the committee members such as, or council members such as, council member would let the mayor know they want to be on this committee. And if other council people wanted to be on that committee, then the mayor would have to sort of look at the work that had been agreed to, and the signs, I wonder that it would come to the whole council.
So who would initiate this process, Councilmember Collins? The actual individual council member, or the mayor at the time?
I believe that in this instance, the issue came up, and the old mayor acted in an interim basis, that then would go to all of us council people to say, we have an interest in this.
Okay, I, I would like to also recognize Commissioner Peach here this evening. And Bill, please correct me if I'm in any way, shape, or form wrong with what I've discovered about our Trustlands Advisory Committee. And actually, I've got a small statement that I've shared with a few council members, as well as given a copy to city clerks, so that the record can reflect clearly on my intent, my discoveries, I should say, of what has happened with our Trustlands Advisory Committee. Again, I owe this, I feel as a, I owe my constituents and fellow council members an explanation of my actions. Some background, this came to light late Monday morning, January 11th, when I was contacted from a member of our community regarding the city of Port Angeles decision to join the Trustlands Advisory Committee. I did ask our new mayor, Mr. Downey, to retract this from the county commissioners meeting for the day. for the day. Not having an appropriate answer addressing my concerns, I did ask commissioners, myself, to hold off until we as a council could have this discussion about becoming involved with Trustlands Advisory Committee. Along with electing a new mayor and deputy mayor, we as a council also work through committee assignments every two, every two years, for those in the audience wondering how this works. I have several questions that I'd like, I'd like answers to and with council permission, I'll proceed with that in order to get to the bottom of the appearance of our past mayor, appointing councilwoman Kidd. There are no objections, I'll proceed. Councilmember Kidd, I know how it feels to defend yourself and what the local press chooses to write and wanted you to have the first chance to respond regarding what was written about you last week in the PBN, that you were the city representative that asked to follow county commissioners for this appointment on November 23rd during their work session as reported by Rob Olekanen with the PBN, or recorded with our local newspaper.
I've had many meetings and I was at their meeting. The discussion was adding members to this committee. So, since I am always looking for an opportunity to benefit the people of Port Angeles, I mentioned that they might want to consider, I don't, you know, know my exact words, but I asked them if they would consider Port Angeles when they were adding seats to the committee. It seemed like it would be beneficial to have this city, opportunity for the city. It was just, it was just a comment and, and, you know, at an opportune moment. And a month later, they, it was, that opportunity came about during, during the Christmas season at the end of the year and the mayor, DeJulio.
Actually, all the dates I'd like to run with you on this, trying to confirm the November 23rd of this moment. Thank you. Councilmember Collins, I hope the November 23rd date sticks in your mind. With the November 23rd procedure, you actually had three different times to bring this up in front of council, or seven weeks' time, in order to make sure a seat, an email was sent out by city manager McKee addressing concerns of attending this.
It was, it was just, it was, you know, it was something where they, I'm not on the Collin County Commission, so that was a.
I'm not accusing you of them.
That's, you know, that was.
I'm actually accusing you of being a member of the Port Angeles City Council.
For the point of order, this is a territory.
I asked, if I could proceed.
No, this is. Well, no, we're asking you not to proceed.
Okay, that's fine, but.
This is ridiculous.
I mean, it's too complicated with our.
We're here to approve those items and that's one of them we're here to choose on. It's fully transparent.
Actually, I believe we owe the public an explanation. Excuse me, sir.
There hasn't been anything happening.
I'm trying to establish that.
I was merely a placeholder until we could tell this evening when, when it could be appointed by the mayor. It was approved by the former mayor and I was merely a placeholder until during the transition of the holidays, we didn't have a new mayor election. This is the appropriate meeting to discuss this. And so, that's why we're here and that's why there is no appointee on there because I was merely a placeholder. I was never an official appointee, that was made very clear. It was approved by Mayor DeJulio and it's appropriate, we discussed it tonight, it's all been completely transparent, there is no cloud, like we shouldn't be.
Thank you for making the decision for council on November 23rd to ask the commissioners to our.
I think it's commendable that we try to get involved with other groups and organizations. There was no commitment made.
Again, in the name of public transparency, we owe the people a chance to make a comment from that letter right over there and let us know if they want us to get involved.
Was that made in a public meeting? Yes, it was completely public.
What was?
What you're saying that she asked.
At the county commissioners?
Yeah.
That wasn't, did all our people within county commissioners?
We didn't approve for her to fill the slot.
Nothing was approved.
But she allowed us to get an opportunity to have a slot, which we wouldn't have had.
I would like to skip forward on this as obviously we've got a little sticking together going on here. Staff, could you bring forward, I would. We need to be able to fix this, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to do that, but this current discussion is not helpful in that because it's way too late to have this kind of, not even appropriate to have this argument or discussion. I'm not going to tolerate any more of this kind of discussion than I tolerate what we had during questions of our, of the committee. So, let me clarify this. I did what I did so that we could have this, frankly, a simple discussion on this matter tonight. It is true it's like, elected like, so that we can, first of all, we need to have an ironic consensus now of whether we believe as a, in a consensus of this city council that participation in, for, to form this committee and then designate a person who would be serving in it is something we need to do and I want that. I'm going to go from Sissy to my right and ask you immediately to tell me, tell us whether you think that it is valuable to have a member of this committee.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Sure. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yeah, and I would say yes. I did attend the meeting on Friday in the absence of the interim designee, Miss Kidd, who was on a trip to California. I had attended it, there's certainly merit, I think Mr. Peach and I have briefly had a discussion and I think it's fair for me to say, I don't need to put the words in Bill's mouth, but I think the commissioners welcomed my welcome participation and I will say it was a four-hour meeting, or nearly a four-hour meeting, so. But, okay, so we have agreed to have a delegate that doesn't need to this committee. So, before, before we go into that, because it could change, I just wanted to gain some degree of unanimity from each of you. You have seen the assignments that have been suggested by myself and that's based on our conversations and your previous experience, your interest in serving in certain areas. They are before you. Is there anybody here on the council who would wish to be removed or they would say, well, that looks pretty good to me or no one would prefer to be reconsidered, considered for something else? Can you share with me your input quickly about this?
I'm fine with the committees outside chair.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
I'd be added to the Trustlands Advisory Committee. I would prefer to be added as a representative to the Trustlands Advisory Committee with my experience in the industry and working with individuals within the industry.
I respect that, thank you. This, this.
I'm happy with my current council assignments, thank you.
Mr. Gates? I'm happy with the current assignments with one change from our earlier discussion due to limited time availability. I'd like to withdraw from the Utility Advisory Committee.
We would need to have, need to have three there, so I'm considering that. Let's just stop here for a moment, just kind of the obstacle of this. Any of the, any of the others of you would be, have a willingness to step in instead?
I would be happy to.
On the Utility Advisory Committee?
Yes, I see.
Okay. Thank you. Please make it known that Jennifer. And, see Lee?
Hi.
Looks okay to you?
Yes.
Okay, good. And lastly, Brad?
I'm happy with the assignments.
Good, thank you, gentlemen and ladies. I want you to know I gave you considerable, I gave you a lot of time and attention. So, that leaves us in the last one, there's been, we have a consensus to have a, it will be an ad hoc committee actually, and this has about a year or so, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, this has some definitions. So, I have from previous, well, let me say this, Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't necessarily consider it, but you, you need to know the meeting starts at 12:00. Publicly, I would say it's four, or maybe you're longer. About once a month or so for this next year. I was so reticent to do that because you can see what they would do some work today. That's very, you're very mad animus and generous on your part. You need to advise again that it would use to be, rather than the wish you.
I would just actually also remind you, Mike, that there'll be chances to review the meeting minutes monthly and if there are occasions you can't make a meeting, that is perfectly excusable.
Mr. Mayor?
It does call for an alternate, if you may want to have one.
My schedule is set according to the customers that I service. And if that means that those customers get serviced at two o'clock in the morning, then that's what occurs. That means if we're in a meeting until midnight and I have to get up at two o'clock in the morning to go service those customers, that's what you do to keep those customers. So, my response to your question, I do realize what it would take and I'm willing to undertake that commitment.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Is councilmember Ruff going to be the alternate?
I'm going to be the alternate.
Sounds like you have a winner.
Okay, well, I.
I'll second or third or fourth, whatever is necessary to give those due of that.
Okay, well, that's my thing, I appreciate Mike's generosity and experience. You are the expert, I, you really are. It'd be very, it'd be very helpful to have you in that kind of events.
I'm very happy, as a local committee head, I'm very happy we have the opportunity to serve us.
Okay, so, the Mark here and Jennifer, if you still know also that on the Trustlands Advisory Committee, the ex goes on Mike's box and the alternate goes on the system. And that's another one of the aspects because I think given the circumstances, there we, it'd be a good idea.
Mr. Mayor, if we're done with our.
That's it.
Commission, committee meetings, is there any way that we could ask staff to identify future committee assignments and proper procedure? Look, this is the second time while I've sat missing that this has come up.
I believe staff would, if it is the wish of the majority of the council, staff would be glad to spend some time on the side of just clarifying the council committee assignments is not in the rules or procedure, it's something we could add and then the council could weigh in on it. And that way, we're sure to have that memorialized and be clear to everybody.
Yeah, again, I'm really interested in any new consideration of committee assignments. That's what this is all about and I'm, again, trying to bring this forward, so.
This would cover that if we move forward with it. So, if Mike can get a consensus, the council would be glad to do that.
Well, my, my understanding is this is a priority, priority, I can't say anymore, of the mayor because he's trying to work with all of the six other council people on it and I think that's his responsibility. So, I'm very happy with codifying what we're actually doing.
Well, for the sake of the director's understanding, my methodology was pretty simple, actually. I mean, I followed what I believed to amend it, standard practice in previous mayors each year, every other year, so it did not go beyond that, that criteria. That's all that I.
I'd say I think it makes total sense to go ahead and codify it so that there won't be any questions in the future.
I will, I will say this is personal information, in fact, that, Richie, all of you felt good about what I had done. I guess some of my, my representatives, I did something, what, notwithstanding that not, I hadn't, I hadn't practiced this before, guys, so. So, thank you for your, thank you for your support and willingness to serve.
Just for, just for clarification, do we have for members that would like us to put the time into adding that to the council? All we'd be doing is pretty much codifying what we're doing, so to be clear.
Well, I'm all for clarification.
Me too.
And. I think we have a consensus. Okay, we're on the council reports. Well, yeah, we have no further questions, we're on the council reports, let's try to, we'd love to hear from you, but this is here for ourselves.
No, we're fortunate. Briefly, I would like to ask for the council's agreement if, at the council pleasure, to have, put a letter, have staff put a letter to the, to the mayor, say, ensure to thank Shell and Polar Pioneer for donating tons of food to our local food banks. And it was much appreciated and very helpful over the holidays. It was very generous and it really helps this community. So, if the council agrees, I would like a thank you letter to the City of Port Angeles for the generosity to our community.
I think it's a great idea, they've been very generous to our community, I'm sorry they're, couldn't have that kind of, so, here, somewhere. If they set such a good example.
I'll bring the specific information for, for staff, but it'd be, oh, that's great, thank you.
Everybody feel good about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Council reports, I had an opportunity to go down and meet up with some of the folks that met at the renewal parking lot, part of the group called Our Town, Port Angeles, and I took a picture of some of them, people I didn't know. And there's a bunch more, these are people that have just volunteered their time and going out picking up trash and needles and cleaning up and I think it's just really commendable, they've done a wonderful, wonderful job. They've got two or three more cleanups scheduled soon, a brush clearing at Shane Park and some stuff on Del Vezzi and it just, I'm just overwhelmed at how people like this have taken the commitment to help our community in such a positive way. So, kudos to them. Also, joined in for a short time with the Mutu City declaration or delegation, I was really happy to see those folks here and hope their exchange students enjoyed their visit to Port Angeles and had a safe trip back. On Friday, the eighth, I went to Olympia and joined in on the Governor's Cascadia Seduction Zone Seminar. It's late, it's too late to go into detail about that, but I would like to do that at a future meeting. There are some very, very serious things that I would like to be able to work with Chief Devuk, who's been really involved with emergency preparedness. And I know about a year and a half or so ago, he gave us a presentation about some emergency preparedness aspects of the city and I hope that you could get that back on the schedule for a revisit to that in the not-too-distant future. And finally, this is a really late night and there's a lot of emotion and issues going on and I would hope that perhaps we could have a consensus to look once again at the EDC issue at the next meeting with a clear, a clear head, maybe some more clarifications of what's available and ramifications of being involved would be. So, I don't know if we can have consensus of that, but that's my request.
I just wanted that.
Do you agree?
No report, thank you.
Go ahead.
I have no council report, but I think it would be helpful and maybe time for us to have some training. You know, I think every year or two, we tend to have some council training on, on how we act.
I think that's already scheduled, and I'd be, we've been talking about it as annual and it has been in two years.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, I too, participated in some activities with PA Camp. They're a very impressive group of people. I was pleased and honored and privileged to be able to participate in a number of activities regarding the Mutu City delegation that was here. It's just thrilling to see the arts and action working collaboratively with their trip area of youth and it's just a great experience. And I did spend a lot of time with some of you, and we're still in the room. I enjoy that. Some of you find that kind of hard to leave. It was good to be able to talk to you. Invitation stands. We're at the Item L, City Manager's Reports.
Excuse me, I realized prior to that, we actually have consensus for people to consider the topic of the EDC involvement at the next meeting. I know we had a...
I think we have, for, I'd like clarification.
I'd like actual clarification because this does take a supermajority. Could this vote reflect the supermajority needed to affect the 2016 budget?
My understanding, to put something on the agenda would only take a base majority of four.
Right.
And then it would, of course, still require a supermajority.
Right.
To act on it in the future.
Right. And I'm, just, if we could come up with a supermajority for revisiting that issue, we just...
So, I think as requested, we take the first step first. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to make this read because I don't want to be accused of rambling on until the next morning, so we're going to agree. But I do have three to start off with. I have three action items that came out of tonight's meeting. One of them is to look at the council rules of procedure and specifically write a petition that discusses what we do with committee assignments and bring that back to the council at some time in the near future. Another item we have is a letter to the Polar Pioneer thanking them for their contribution to the community and we'll have that ready for the mayor's signature. We'll get that done and we'll put it in the information side of the package just so you have that. And then the last item, there was a consensus to revisit the EDC funding. We'll bring that back for discussion. There are various reports and minutes in your packet. If you have any questions, you can get hold of the appropriate department director and very briefly, we have one item, we said we'll get back to the council on, and that's the Esco River property repair update and all the funding for that. I'll have Director Fulton briefly go over that. Briefly.
Briefly. In less than 30 days, council approved moving forward with this project. Nippon provided the funding, matching funding within 48 hours. Jeremy Corr got there, $400,000 together, ordered a contract and the work is complete. For the federal government to do that in less than 30 days, and I've worked with the Navy for 27 years, that is unheard of.
Nippon paid, the empire now is all on Nippon's property, so the city just facilitated it to get it done because we have the contract with the Corps.
I think there was a fourth item, which is for Sissy and I, perhaps with the mayor and the city manager, to work on an ad hoc committee for alternatives to prioritizing the water.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. I know there's at least one lady in the audience, and there she is, who has very specifically and very kindly requested the opportunity to offer a public comment at our second public commentary. I will now open that time and request that only those who have not previously, you know, participated tonight, be able to do that. Jennifer, were there any other names for you? Okay, so, Mayor, please, of course, I'm...
I'm sorry, at this point of work, I thought we had opened the second, I mean, I know it's really late, but I thought we could open the second public comment so that people could comment.
That's right.
Right, but if they've spoken before, they could speak again.
She didn't.
She hasn't spoken.
Right, I know, I'm just saying if they've spoken before, they could speak again.
That's right. That's what I, that's what the, that's the motion that was adopted by council.
Oh, I thought you said if they've spoken before, they couldn't speak again. So, that's okay.
We need to get, she has been very very patient. She was here approximately four minutes after six, plus her heart. She's still here. Thank you, Christine.
My name's Tammy Bradliff and I live at 50 Vincent Road in Port Angeles. And I am a simple person with a simple lifestyle, but I'm not simple-minded and I love this town. We were in the Coast Guard and we tried for 10 years to get stationed here and mine did. We've been in, we were in for 22 years and we retired here, raised our children here, we've had businesses here and love this town. It's been really sad to see some of the things that have been happening in our town with all the different issues that were brought up tonight, the homelessness, the drug issue. But the one thing that really saddens me is the lack of confidence that the community has right now in government. And I think the only way that we're going to fix this issue is to bring more people together and to stop thinking of our own agendas and thinking about more of a community agenda and what's going to benefit us. We want to bring more people in, more businesses in the town, but people are not going to be willing to invest in this town if they don't see that we can pull together, that we can face the issues that come up and we can solve these issues. I know there's a lot of passion, a lot of frustration and some of that came out in outbursts tonight and I was against the foray nation. I, I think there are a lot of other options. I have a lot of ideas, so if anybody wants to contact me, I have a lot of ideas that will address the issue of the, of the oral health that we need for our children and for all of us, but without stepping on people's rights, without feeling like people have no voice. So, I just want to say that I understand the outbursts, but it does no one any good to shout out and to get angry because it, it makes you look like a mob. It doesn't make you look like a serious citizen who is willing to do the work and step forward and be a part of the solution instead of a part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Well...
Wait, did she say her name and address any of the stuff?
Yeah, did you scare, did you hear?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you agree again?
I just have a quick thing to say. Early Smith, you have on 2:48. I've been reading American history and it's messy. Democracy has never been orderly, calm. It's always been raucous. So, and I, I'm assuming you all know who Thomas Paine is. He said it's the responsibility of a patriot to protect his country from this government. And that's what we witnessed tonight. Thank you.
Dan Baidem, Tulsa, Walcott Street, Port Angeles. I'd signed up to talk about fluoride on the second session when I first got here this evening. What I'm going to say I think is related to fluoride issue because the fluoride issue's become a bigger issue, the rights of the people and their voice to be heard. Earlier, right after the, well, admittedly somewhat raucous first public comment session, the mayor repeatedly asked the people to quiet down and listen to him. I agree he's got First Amendment rights, but that's why people were getting a little loud because we feel our First Amendment rights and our right for a democratic process has been denied. You say that you want to be heard. We do too. We voiced our opinions in that poll and in crazy logic, poo-pooed the whole thing. Seriously? Earlier I mentioned, says US Army retired on there. I took an oath to defend my nation and my constitution, where we have rights to include First Amendment rights and the rights to be a free people. I took an oath to defend my nation against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And if a city council will become the entity of the people with tyranny, I remember the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence where it says, "We must stand up to it." We hope we don't have to go that far. We want to be heard. We want, we want to be considered and what our wishes are, not dictated with tyranny. But if we're not going to be heard, then we will take back our government and we will have our freedoms again. Thank you.
I'm going to entertain emotional frenzy. I'm still waiting for a second.
Second.
Good night, everybody. Good night.